All right, good morning, everyone. It's seven o'clock, April 12, 2023. We'll call this meeting in the Fergus Falls City Council. May hold the order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Jim.
Here.
Here.
We have a quorum, and we also have a number of items this morning. We're going to try to move through them quickly. And first item we're going to move to slightly out of orders, we're going to go to item number two, which is amendment to code 90.24B, subsection three, time allowed, construction activities. And I'll call on councilmember Tom Rufford to introduce this item for discussion. Good morning, Tom.
Hey, good morning, everybody. So I, I guess, interest to full disclosure, I, I'm currently working out at the solar project. And we're, of course, trying to get that done as quickly as possible to minimize the impact that it has on the, the neighbors and the folks that use that road and whatnot. And, um, and I, you know, I, uh, I didn't know this, but, um, you know, we're not allowed to start working until nine AM on weekends, on Saturdays. I actually don't know what it is on Sundays, but we won't, I don't think we'll be working Sundays, to my knowledge. But, um, I just thought we could explore in, uh, in, in non-residential zones, um, allowing earlier start times on the weekends. Just to, you know, we get those extra two hours or whatever the case might be, it's just going to get the project done that much quicker. And, you know, we got guys that drive from Fargo and, um, you know, if you're going to make that kind of drive, then, uh, to get, you know, an extra two hours at work is kind of nice. So I just figured I'd, uh, round it up the flagpole and see who salutes.
Thanks, Tom. Um, so quite, I don't know what staff wants to, maybe Andrew, is there, um, you mentioned non-residential?
So there's, yeah, I mean, differential in residential zones versus non-residential? Obviously, it would be less than ideal in a neighborhood.
Right.
But, you know, in this circumstance, if there's a job site that's on the edge of town, um, if, if there was a way that we could, um, could make that happen for those, you know, types of, of projects, uh, um, yeah, that would just be, you know, be good for our builders and, and the rest that may benefit from that. But I'd like to hear what other people think on it.
Yeah, the, your honor, for the way it, our code reads today does not differentiate between residential and ag or industrial zones, but we certainly could if that's the direction the council wants to go.
The only time I remember this coming up is when there was a, um, if you remember, there was a conditional use permit from a home business in a residential zone. And they, they specifically, you know, the neighbors specific, and obviously it's already in there, it's nine o'clock on Saturdays. But I think they specifically wanted some restrictions on when they could start working on Saturdays, but, um, which makes complete sense. But, you know, especially if you have an ag zone or an industrial zone, I would not see why we couldn't amend that to allow work to be given, um, before nine o'clock on Saturday. But so I guess what, what do other council members feel?
Well, just, you know, like, Seagull and Steel, right, right, real close to it, they're open at eight o'clock on, on Saturday mornings when they're, when they're not open right now, but they will, I think, this summer. But I mean, so it's like, it's okay for them to be an outdoor business, I guess, and then we shut these guys down until nine. So I don't, I don't have a problem with going to eight or seven, or whatever you, I don't know what you wanted.
Usually we would start at seven.
No.
Uh, but, um, yeah, and, and, yeah, and I think, you know, because I would totally get if, say, you know, that they're remodeling a building that's in the middle of a residential neighborhood, you know, you don't want the hammer drills starting up at, at seven AM. But if we could find a compromise, um, where projects that aren't going to affect the surrounding homeowners as much, um, that, you know, the projects could benefit from that.
I think, I think what we also too have to look at too, this year being a perfect example, you know, we're limited on what can get done in the summers. And I think that's a great idea. I think we need to, I totally support that, uh, to get some progress moving ahead with these short summers that we're having and, you know, start, uh, getting to, uh, starting late on these projects. I think that's a great idea.
Thanks, Al.
Is it?
Brent? Brent, then he goes.
Yeah, I'm in agreement. Um, as far as starting early, I mean, as long as it's not too early, and then when it does comes down to residential areas. Have we ever given anybody an exception to that where they've come forward and maybe asked for a exemption for that? For a certain project in a neighborhood or something like that?
Yeah, councilmember Thompson, mayor, I'm not aware of that. I'm sorry, excuse me. Um, we don't want to get into a point, a situation where we're doing variances to this noise request because we can hear those all the time.
Okay.
And then it just puts the council in a tough place to approve some and deny some. Um, conditional use permit in a residential zone would likely be more restrictive, not less restrictive. So I'm guessing we haven't done that in the past.
Okay.
So we could move this to the, it sounds like everyone's in agreement, we could move it to the council. What was the process? Do we need to change the?
The, we'll have to have Ralph draft amendment to the ordinance, go through the ordinance process.
But we could probably get that started right away with a motion to the council, someone like them.
I was gonna say, I think, I think maybe we have to also just consider what is the work type? Because, uh, if, if it's, if it's heavy machinery making noise, that's going to resonate to, you know, houses. And maybe the compromise is kind of eight o'clock, not, not nine o'clock and not seven o'clock. Um, you know, just because it's, uh, it, it, noise travels. So, you know, depending on where the prevailing winds are, it's going to blow the, blow the noise, you know, and the heavy machinery and, you know, or whether it's sort of jackhammers or whatever, it's all make, all make noise. And, and there is a, I mean, the state does have a noise ordinance as well, so.
And we can maybe, through the ordinance process, it'll be a few weeks, we can maybe get some input too, if there's people that residents have some. But we can get that process started Monday night with a motion to.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Anthony. Second, Tom.
I'll second that.
Scott, did you have a question, comment?
I think part of what Alan Brent brought up, there's been a difference between a business that's going to be open as a regular year-round business and a construction project that comes and goes. You know, even though you can have a long-term project, it's going to eventually be done. I mean, it's a seasonal thing. And whether that gets incorporated into what we would change the code to read, you know, that it applies to seasonal work or temporary work as opposed to a business that's open that would then probably go through a conditional use permit for a, you know, a long-term answer to their question if you were a business. So there's a few more aspects of this that probably ought to be considered as well.
Thanks, thanks, Scott. So we have a motion to bring this to the council Monday night and start the process of drafting an ordinance that can be amended through the process. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, that motion carries.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Tom. Uh, back to item number one is the creation of a new maintenance operations supervision position. And we'll call on our HR director, Mike Hartwell. Good morning, Mike.
Good morning, everybody. Very much for having me. Um, the community arena will be providing year-round ice production and maintenance. Um, this will allow us to have proper maintenance and, and year-round ice, which is really exciting. We've been working a long time at getting to this point. With that becomes the need for an additional full-time position. So I'm today requesting, uh, the addition of a maintenance operations supervisor. And this person would be responsible, uh, per the job description that I provided to you for a lot of things. They would have responsibility of all maintenance staff and also staff doing ice shaving and whatever general cleanup and various projects at the community arena. This person would also be highly technical related to maintaining ammonia compressors, uh, OSHA regulations related to, uh, that type of equipment. So a whole host of things would fall under that person's, um, responsibility. The budget impact for this position is going to be, uh, shared. Um, ISD 544 would be roughly thirty-three percent. Uh, Fergus Falls Hockey Association would be thirty-eight percent. The Fergus Falls Skating Club would be eleven point five percent, and the city would be roughly seventeen point five percent. We also intend to market ice and sell ice time to other outside users, which would then help compensate for the additional costs and benefit everyone within the community. Any questions?
Thanks, Mike. Um, I have a question. So does this, uh, it's a new position, but is there a reduction of one of the other employees? Is it, is it?
No reduction.
So, so the same number of?
Additional position.
Additional position, okay.
I, I have a question, uh.
Yeah.
I, I think before approving a new position, would it be possible to get like an old chart and go through like what the city organization chart actually is and how many employees we do have?
I could certainly provide that, yes.
We can bring that for Monday night, I would assume, right? Is there a issue for the bill? Oh, yeah, please, Scott, go ahead.
One thing about this new position, I've been involved, been up there quite a bit lately, and, uh, that new building we acquired now pretty much is we have to take over completely, control of it, and it needs a lot of cleaning, updating, uh, maintenance, things that not been neglected, but just needs to be updated. And that's what this person's going to do probably for that first summer and year, you know, the whole time. So it's, it's, uh, it's a well-needed position to be done. I like the way that was, it was drawn out of who's going to pay for it, how it's going to get done, and the hockey association, we had a meeting last night, and they explained to them how they were going to help pay for this position. And, uh, but it's a, it's a well-needed to keep this building. It's a great building. We need to get it up, not updated, but just brought up to specs of cleanliness, I guess I'll call it, because it's kind of been neglected because of the way it's been gone over the years, and it just needs to be, um, brought up a little bit better. And then the heating, of course, he's going to take care of the heating system. We've had complaints about the heat all year long, so we kind of got that up. So it's, it's a great thing. I've been, I'm glad it's going to happen, so.
Thanks, Scott. So we could, um, we could move this to discussion on Monday night with a motion. Scott, would you like to?
I'll make that motion, yes, sir.
Something like second, second, Jim, all right.
Can I say a couple of things?
Please do, Bill, and then Brent, you're next.
Just to clarify on the budget, because I want to make sure you kind of understand where we're looking at that. This formula on percentages is what's in the current contract. So right now, we take the annual budget for the arena, split it over the organizations this way. Now, we, some of the dilemma we come at is summer ice. Well, the school and the city don't participate in summer ice. We provide that basically for the hockey association and the skating club. So we need to kind of isolate that during the summer, reconcile that. So the school, for example, isn't paying for summer ice that they're not using. So there, this won't be the exact formula. This is the current formula. We're looking at our contracts with that. Also, if we can sell more ice to external users, then that's better for everyone getting money in here too. And this really, the driving force is, remember, we took ownership of the chiller. The school used to run and operate that chiller. Now the city needs to operate and run that. So that's a big driving force behind this as well. But we'll probably come back to you a little bit more in the future here when we nail down how agreements will look. So just wanted to touch base on that, but more to come on the agreement side too, so.
Thanks, thanks, Bill. Brent?
Do we know roughly by going year-round how much additional skate time is going to be involved? And I understand the selling of the time in order to compensate for some of this, but will that increase any possible open skating time for the public?
Yeah, I, I don't think we were contemplating adding open hours during the summer, just because as Bill just mentioned, um, we don't want to incur any cost in the summer.
Okay.
If we start allowing, we certainly could. If we do that, then we have to share in that formula in the summertime as well.
Yeah, I mean, because I've heard from people in the past, you know, you know, they're not against the arena or anything else like that, neither am I. But they, they would have liked to have seen a little bit more open skating time out on the rinks instead of, you know, out on the, you know, ponds and stuff. They'd like to have something a little bit.
But just, just to be clear, you know, the summer I don't think has nearly as much, um, usage from the public in that rink. I mean, it's pretty, it's pretty specific who uses that rink in the summertime. But I hear your point on the winter. Anytime we can add additional hours for the public, I think it's a, it's a benefit. But the summer's a different, it's just a different formula, the way that, that ice is, um, scheduled in the summertime.
Yeah, there's an hourly rate that users pay, um, and then non, non-contract users, like so outside the figure skaters or the hockey association, the rate's even higher. Our goal is to fill as many hours as we can with groups, so it drives everybody's cost down, including the cities. You know, and, and we don't have, if there's hours that aren't filled, we're not going to have staff just sitting up there waiting. They're not going to be working, so we're not incurring that cost. So, um, you know, it's a give and take. We certainly could provide staffing and, and open hours, but we're losing revenue if we do that. And, um, you know, historically, we've never done it, and I don't know if there would be much demand in the summertime from the general public or not, so.
Any other questions? Scott?
I wonder, I don't know if this will be Bill or Mike who would answer the question, but as you, uh, indicated in the packet, the budget impact for 2023 is $436,000 and for going forward is $550,000. So the, maybe we could understand that a little bit better. Is it just an increase of about a hundred and?
Thirteen thousand?
Hundred and thirteen thousand?
Yep. So if you allocated that one thirteen over this percentage, then the impact to the city would be about $20,000. That we would actually increase the current budget, it's not in the current budget. But that's why I say that's not an exact science either, because, you know, a lot of this will be used to run summer ice, and we have to figure out how to bill that out a hundred percent to the user groups using that. And then, um, certainly since we're running that chiller system, that affects the six-month season during the school year in essence, where the school, the city, the hockey association, skating club should all share in that increased cost as well. So we're, we're kind of figuring that out. I don't have the clear-cut answer, but the total budget's going up a hundred and thirteen thousand. And then the funding sources would be going up as well on that side. Now, get a little bit more out of that in the summer, out of the two groups, and then, so could our impact to the city be less than twenty? It's potential for that.
I think that's helpful, because to read it and say that it's a impact of 550,000 sounds kind of extreme when it's really.
And that's not an impact. That would be the adjusted budget. We're going from a budget of four hundred and thirty-six is the budget that you adopted as a city council. It would be going up a hundred and thirteen for, um, the new position and an adjustment to our current position, because those duties would actually be changing on the current position a bit.
Thank you.
You know, your honor, on this, could we look at the utility rate? Um, is there an impact? Yeah, obviously, these chillers consume a lot of electric. And is the rate, when you, I mean, when you're, if you're going to pull that amount of load in the summer, you know, how does that? What rate are we being charged at? Is it the same as the winter, or is it the same as the?
I do not have an answer. I don't know.
I know, I mean, the.
I would know that.
Right.
There's seasonal rates, adjustments, and, uh, summer ice might cost a lot more, you know, to, to create than winter ice.
And we're, we didn't adjust any of our ice time rates this year, because this is the first year of completely operating that chiller on our own. So before, we would pay a portion of the school's electric and natural gas bill. Now all our electric, we're separately metered, so now we will have actual, you know, documented costs of exactly what we used. So we're kind of going through this year to see what are the actual operating costs? How will that change? We'll work that out through our 2024 budget now and adjust that, and then probably come back to you and say, here's what the arena rates need to be now, for current users and external users.
Thanks, Bill. So we have a motion to continue this discussion on Monday night at the council regarding this position. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, that motion carries. Item number three is an AS400 server discussion, and we'll call on Dan Knutson. And Tony Neville's also here with us this morning. Morning, Dan.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, councilmembers. We're here. We're here to ask your approval for the AS400 system. It's our main server system, um, currently on a power ten version. And we're looking to upgrade it to a power, power nine version to a power ten version. That includes faster disk drives, uh, gives us a little bit better system, and it gives us a three-year warranty. Uh, that warranty on the old power nine system is more expensive than the new power ten. And so that's why when you look at the information, we're saving a little over that ninety thousand on this purchase over those three years. Cost is about two hundred and forty thousand. Um, that is in our technology budget currently. We've been planning for this and, and looking to do it for the last few years. Um, we do have that quote from Hepner Consulting, Minnesota State Pre-Bid Contractor. So we should have everything in place. Um, we just need approval to move forward.
Thank you, Jim.
Any questions? Tony can answer them.
Do we get a pile off that? Thank you.
And have a question?
You bet. Thank you, Tom. Someone like to second that?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Jim. Go ahead, Tom.
Is there any chance the system goes to power eleven?
Oh, yes.
Good question.
The moment you've signed this deal?
This is, that's a, this is Spinal Tap reference. Goes to eleven. Good movie.
Thank you, Tom.
Tough crowd. Yikes. Thanks, Lisa. Appreciate it. Uh, other questions?
So, um, yeah, it's, it's planned, um, saving the, the city money, so it makes a lot of sense. Thanks for your work on this.
We do this about every four years, is what we've been, is that right? It's been about every four years we do an upgrade.
Sure. So thanks for bringing that to us this morning and explaining to the public. Scott?
Uh, one question that wouldn't necessarily be specific to this, but just as we have a department such as this that budgets for a purchase, why don't they just buy it? Why does it come through this process? Because we don't approve everything that every department purchases.
I think Bill knows the answer to that.
So our purchasing policy follows Minnesota State bid laws. So if it's twenty-five thousand or under, departments just purchase that, it's in their budget. If it's twenty-five to seventy-five thousand, we have to go out and get quotes, um, verbal quotes or written quotes. And departments can do that as well, as long as it's in their budget and they check with me. If it's, did I say up to seventy-five, up to one seventy-five, hundred and seventy-five? A hundred and seventy-five and above, we have to go through the sealed bid process or use the state bid contract like we're doing here. And our policy is we have to go to city council with that. So it's more of an internal control of those really big purchases come before you as a group.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Uh, we have a motion in a second to bring this to the council. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, the motion carries. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Tony. Uh, next up is a national opioid settlement request, and we'll call on Andrew Brem, Seth, our city administrator. Good morning, Andrew.
Good morning, Your Honor. Councilmembers, excuse me. Snapchat.
That would be fireman.
Yeah, pushed a button or did something?
That's the notice.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. So, uh, back in, uh, the beginning of 2022, we signed on to the first round of opioid settlements. Um, the federal government has settled with, I think, four or five different manufacturers now on round two. And, uh, we're talking significant, um, billions of dollars worth of settlements with these pharmaceutical companies and retail stores that sold them. And, um, they're asking any city over the size of 10,000 in population to sign on to the settlement. The more cities, communities, and counties that do sign on, um, dictates how the money is distributed down from the federal government to the states. And then ultimately it gets to the county level. Um, through this memorandum of, uh, agreement, the county is required to consult with cities that sign on in the county on an annual basis pertaining to the use of those funds. So we don't actually see the funds physically, um, but the county does consult with us on how to use those funds in a way that could also benefit Fergus Falls. Currently, Chief Bergerin is in communication with the county on ways, um, and resources that could benefit the community of Fergus Falls utilizing these funds. I won't share a lot of details because I, it's certainly not my place. It's more the county's place. But I'm talking about adding actual professionals that could help respond to calls in ways that would focus on, um, mental health or other, um, first aid or first response needs to addiction or overdosing and things like that. So there is some benefit to the city. Doesn't cost us anything. It's a DocuSign document. I click through about three boxes and click accept. And, and then, uh, that increases the amount of money that comes to Minnesota and ultimately to our town. So, um, I probably won't be able to answer many questions on this because it's not something that we're well-versed in. But the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, the League of Minnesota Cities, and the Attorney General's Office have all reached out to all the cities that are over 10,000 in population, just encouraging us to, to sign on and take action. And it sounds like every community in Minnesota that qualifies will do so, so. I don't know if anybody has any questions. I'll attempt to answer, but otherwise it's very straightforward and, and doesn't cost us anything and takes about two minutes of time.
Thanks.
I got a question, but maybe I don't know whether, whether Lee is able.
Make a motion to the council. Okay, go ahead, Anthony.
Um, I, I mean, it says obviously that, you know, potentially the money could be assigned to the county. I mean, what, 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 what's the potential of what the county is looking to do with the money? I mean, are they going to put it into a current program or create new programs?
Yeah, the conversation, I'll let you, am I good talking on it? All right. The, uh, the conversation that's currently happening, like I mentioned, is Chief Bergerin would create new programs, new resources that would directly benefit, um, law enforcement countywide, but also, um, mostly in Fergus Falls. This is kind of the population center with those types of needs. And the focus is on, um, mental health when we respond to calls. We're, you know, we're, we're very, uh, light on our ability to respond to and provide adequate resources to mental health calls. And then, uh, first aid or first response related to overdose, um, type things. The way the county ultimately spends these monies has to, has a, has to have a tie-in to the opioid issue. It's not just a blank check they can spend on streets or anything like that. But, um, my understanding is there's conversations around new programming that could benefit the entire county, but also specifically Fergus Falls.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Just like to say thanks to Chief Bergerin on, for working on this. It's an important issue and to get these funds and utilize them. This is, it's a real issue, so. Motion to move this to the council. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
I didn't catch, Your Honor, I didn't catch who seconded. I got.
I did.
Scott did.
Okay, thank you.
Pose, same sign. The motion carries. Thanks, Andrew. Uh, next we'll have an update on the 2022 Minnesota State Active Transportation Infrastructure Program from our city engineer, Brian Uvaro. Good morning, Brian.
Good morning, Your Honor, and members of the council. Uh, just to give you a little update in regards to the 2022 Minnesota State Active Transportation Program. This was an application. Yeah, back in October, the city council motioned staff to submit a letter of intent for this project. In late October, we received a, a letter from the state indicating that we met the criteria for the letter of intent. Therefore, uh, the final application with the group was submitted to the state back in December by the end of month 2022. Uh, just recently, I was notified, I've attached the letter in your packet and everything, that we were not selected for this project. Uh, a total of eighty-one applications were submitted with requests of twenty-nine and a half million dollars of these funds, and only nine projects were awarded these funds. Uh, I've attached a table in the memo here indicating, uh, where some of the selected projects were. I just want to note, yeah, under the column, or excuse me, row, Greater Minnesota Small Cities, there is only one in District Four, which is, Fergus Falls is a part of, uh, the city of Pelican Rapids with a request of three hundred and seventy thousand, oh, three hundred, three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. Uh, but that was the only one in District Four, and I also see that not all districts had awarded projects. So, uh, I just wanted to provide, uh, this update and this project, uh, answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Brian.
Got a lot of need, fine.
Any questions?
None.
For Brian? Okay. Thank you. Uh, moving on. Next, CP number fifty-nine sixty, which is the 2023 Street Utility Improvement Project Number One.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Uh, yes, uh, see, Seth, we substantially completed the project plans and specifications. I attached, uh, up on the projected rate here, uh, the title sheet for these plans, it's going to be signed. I just want to note, recall, this is a reconstruction project. The limits are Laurel Street from First Avenue to Broadway, Linden from Broadway to Oak, and then Summit from Broadway to Oak as well. Like I mentioned, this is a reconstruction project. We're reconstructing sewer, water mains, sewer services, water services, storm sewer and storm sewer as needed. And fully reconstructing the pavement section, and we're replacing the curb and gutter and sidewalk only to facilitate the construction, morsel services at this time. Uh, we're estimating the product, estimated cost for this project says one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, because this must have to competitively bid for a minimum twenty-one day publication. Uh, I haven't set the actual bid date. Uh, this is primarily because we're trying to finalize the plans right now. Uh, but the overall project schedule will take into account the final, holding the final assessment hearing prior to awarding the construction contract services. We've done this process for the past five years on these type of projects that are Minnesota Statute 429 funded. Uh, like I mentioned, if there's favorable bids, the lowest responsible bidder's itemized cost will be utilized in the final cost. Assessment rolls, uh, I'll then be requesting the council to set the final cost hearing, and the individual final assessment notices will be sent to the, to the benefiting properties. So at this time, Your Honor, I've laid out the budget. This has been presented in the preliminary injury report and the preliminary cost hearing that we've already done associated with this project. So at this time, I'm requesting a resolution accepting the project specifications and a resolution authorization to advertise for bids. I hope that's any questions you may have. I hope up to any questions you have.
Thank you, Brian. We can bring that to the council for action Monday night with a motion. Thank you. Brent?
I'll second.
Thank you, Scott. Questions for Brian? I've got a quick question. You might not know the answer, but just out of curiosity. So this is, you know, one point seven million dollars estimate for four blocks. Like, what would that have cost six, six years ago? Any idea? I mean, how much of, that seems like a lot of money. That, that's what we're up against when we're looking at the reconstruction of our streets in twenty twenty-three. It's like, you know, one point seven million dollars for a four-block section. We got a lot of blocks in this town. I just, you know, trying to think through that, like it just tells me, like, the discussion on streets and how we're gonna fund them needs, you know, we need to have that, it's real, you know? Because we're not gonna get a appreciate the work. This is not anything, but I'm just saying that for us, you know, we're not gonna get ahead doing four blocks at a time at one point seven million in the budget that we have, so. Yeah.
If I can just add to that, Your Honor?
Yeah.
And that's why I noted in this reconstruction project, we're only replacing the curb and gutter and sidewalk as needed to facilitate the service replacements. It would certainly be nice to replace all the curb and gutter and everything, but we're trying to keep these project costs low.
Yeah.
But it does, when we come to reconstruction projects, it does, it is, brings concerns, especially with doing sidewalk replacements. Where do you start? Where do you stop? Because there are a lot of deteriorated portions. In some cases, can be better off replacing the whole entire block, and we will, if need be, but makes it rather difficult at times.
Yeah. Thanks, Brian.
Just if I may speak to Brian. Also, too, what, that roundabout that's gonna, would be where the old BJ's used to be east, how much is that project again?
Off the top of my head, I don't want to be quoted. I think we're about at two point one million total project cost. And a third of that being city share. And also funded through our state aid, state aid account.
Right. I just kind of want the overall picture, because if we're looking at a roundabout that's over two million, I think, you know, if we can get some streets that are done in the city for one point seven, I think we should jump on that. I think we have to compare those things, especially at a road that is very passable over there, too. So, and I know that had passed. So I just wanted to make that comparison. Thank you.
Thanks for that comparison.
Now, if I'm correct on that, I agree with Al. I'm, I'm not really in favor of the roundabout either. But if I'm correct, the portion that we're using is state aid, which only can be used on a handful of streets in the city?
If I may speak?
Sure, and then we're gonna get back to the
Yep, exactly.
Four blocks that we're actually
Also, too, and some of those roads, too, was Union and Cleveland, which are in very, very poor shape.
Thanks. So we have a motion to bring this project that we're discussing here to the council on Monday night. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Pose, same sign, that motion carries. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Our next item for discussion is Project nine seven six seven, which is Downtown Riverfront, Phase Two, and it's a, discussing an easement with the federal government.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. During the final design for this project, it was determined that we needed a temporary and permanent easement generally located adjacent to the federal courthouse. These easements are needed for a storm sewer discharge and also the temporary is needed to for the construction to occupy and do this installation. I've attached a unit before you on the projector that's consistent with the descriptions contained in your packet. As I mentioned, these easements are part of federal courthouse. We prepared the easement descriptions that are in the packet. They were sent to the U.S. Administration of General Services. They have provided their review and they've provided their redline version that's contained in your packet. Both myself and city attorney have reviewed. We don't take any make your exceptions to what's included, other than some of the highlighted fillable format stuff. So at this time, I'm requesting authorization for myself and the city attorney to execute both these permanent and temporary utility agreements with the United States of America acting by and through the Administrator of General Services. And I'll go up to any questions you may have.
Thanks, Brian. Any, anyone have any questions for Brian? I'll offer that. Thank you. Brent? Would you like to second that? Thanks, Scott.
Okay.
Further discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Hold, same sign, that motion carries. Last item on the agenda this morning is Public Improvement Number six zero seven nine, setting a final cost hearing for the sidewalk program. And I'll call again on Brian Yvaro.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, it's at time. I'm requesting to set the final cost hearing for Public Improvement six zero seven nine. That's the twenty twenty-two sidewalk program final cost hearing. We're requesting to set the final cost hearing date for May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three at five thirty P.M. in these council chambers. Provide a little synopsis and I can get into more detail and everything. I just want to note, this project is becoming a little bit more difficult. We budgeted thirty thousand dollars for our share for this project, but finding contractor availability to do it on the city's behalf is becoming more and more difficult as we go on. So we might have to have more discussions about this project and how we can further utilize it, but it has been, is becoming difficult finding contractors for this work, and so.
Thanks. Thanks, Brian. And we can set that public hearing with a motion to the council?
Make that motion?
Thanks, Anthony. Thanks, Scott. Question?
On the, as you mentioned, becoming more difficult, I guess, one thing that we might think about is increasing that thirty thousand dollar figure to a higher number to make it maybe more possible to either do more projects or get a contractor involved. So something to look forward to. And then I guess, since we're talking about sidewalks, I guess I'm reminded, and I apologize, back when we talked about the State Active Transportation Infrastructure Program earlier, I should have asked the question then, but that was primarily, what we had requested was primarily a sidewalk project. Correct? Was it stairs and, and sidewalks around the school area over Lake Kennedy?
Yes, with enhancements to signage and everything as well, but a majority of sidewalk.
So my question on that was, since we weren't able to get the funding for that, is that project just dead until we can find another way to fund it, or is that still something that was gonna go forward anyway? And we were just hoping to be able to fund portions of it with that funding?
Answered a question. Prior to that submitting the application for that project, it was, I guess, not under CIP. There were some petitions, some individuals from the Bike and Pedestrian Committee that petitioned the council for that project, so we reacted with providing the application and seeking the funding. This project is kind of a standalone. This is reserved for residents and everything for usually smaller words, few panels, tree lift, what have you and everything. It has been utilized a lot over the years. So we may have to, I guess, in the program, I have to, I'll probably have to come back and think about some ideas how we can try to entice, but in general, we're just not getting a lot of responses for some of the quote packages we get up for some of these bids. And individuals that have done it commonly in the past for the city, I would have to say they may be sunsetting, for lack of better terms, looking for retirement, too. But there's not really a lot of backfill trying to get this type of work.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Any other questions for Brian? Got a motion to set this cost hearing for May fifteenth? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Hold, same sign, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Andrew Lynn, anything else to come before the council? If not, Scott?
Just an announcement. People have maybe noticed the construction of Bethel Church over the last year, and there's an open house tomorrow from four thirty to six thirty. Public is invited. There won't be any event, kind of a ceremony, you know, ribbon cutting, nothing like that. It's just open from four thirty to six thirty tomorrow, and everyone's invited and welcome to come.
Thanks, Scott. And with that, we're adjourned.